That's all I got.
Caprin?
Here.
Gretkin?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
Scott?
Here.
Waters?
Here.
Can we stand for a moment with a silent prayer followed by the Pledge of Allegiance? Amen? Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Is there somebody here from Security Bank? Come on forward there. Come on up to the podium. Go ahead, stand there and I'll read this and then you've got to say a few words if you would. We have a commendation reason where as you're commended for taking the time, the initiative, and the effort to create a beautiful business property that contributes greatly to the city of Sioux City. Whereas you should be proud of the work you've done and the beauty that you've created. And whereas we thank you for allowing other citizens to enjoy your beautiful property and for teaching by example the merits of beautification to our community. Now therefore, I, Robert E. Scott, Mayor of the City of Sioux City, Iowa, on behalf of the City Council, to hereby commence Security National Bank with locations of 601 Pier Street, 4700 Sergeant Road, 901 Pier Street, and 3131 Floyd Boulevard for exhibiting pride in Sioux City and being the named recipient of the Pride of Sioux City Business Beautification Award. I'd like to thank you for what you've done and say a few words if you would. We appreciate how nice your offices look, so say a few words if you would.
Absolutely. I'm Mandy Severs. I manage the Sioux City and Dakota Dunes Branch locations directly. This is Will Schmidt. He's part of our maintenance team. Terry Fiedler, who is the manager, was not able to join us today. But on behalf of Security National Bank, we have a strong tie to the community. Thank you all for nominating us for this award. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
I just want to speak on behalf of our committee. We have added a couple of new people, Erin in Community Development and Caitlin. We've partnered with the Iowa's Extension Office and Master Gardener's Program. We just want to make sure we encourage all businesses to go out and vote. You can vote at our website at locateSiouxCity.com under our News tab. It's a really easy form. It comes directly to me once you guys nominate, so. And then I do want to have Caitlin speak on behalf of the ISU Extension Office.
I'm Caitlin Brinkoff. I'm the new Horticulture Educator for the Iowa State Extension Outreach. We're just very excited to be a part of this program in Sioux City. With the Master Gardener Program, we have individuals that take almost a college-level course for a couple of months in the fall, and they get certified with a Master Gardener Volunteer Status in which they can volunteer many hours out into the community. It's for Woodbury County, but many of our men, almost $23,000, and that's just as of right now for this year, goes right back into the community of volunteer time. So I'm very happy to be working with those individuals and hopefully throughout our time with the Pride of Sioux City Award, they'll be helping us with the judging with them.
Master Gardener to do some stuff for you. How do you get a lift?
We actually will only do work if we can provide education with it.
No, I know that, but are there Master Gardeners in the community that sell their service?
They don't necessarily sell their service. They're not allowed to use the title along with, you know, say they were working at a garden center, they're not allowed to use their title with that. Just kind of a conflict of interest for Iowa State with that.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, we're going to go on to interviews, events, facilities, and interim advisory board, and I'm going to probably not do well on this first name. Mark Ball Tousis? Come on up and tell me how bad I messed up your name and why you want to sit on the Event Facility and Tourism Advisory Board.
The last name's Bautousis.
Oh, what?
You're close. Very close.
Not bad. Dan coached me, but I didn't quite get it even after he coached me.
Hey, that's right. No big deal.
He's got an advanced degree, so.
It's been butchered a lot worse, so I guarantee you that. Well, basically, I've been in the hospitality business here in Sioux City since 2007 and, you know, ran several of the properties here in town. I served on the Iowa State Lodging Association as a board member. I currently serve on a board with Western Iowa Tech that has to do with their hospitality program. Basically, I'd like to help the city any way that I can on drawing more events to the community. So whether it's through people that I know in Des Moines that possibly know of stuff that's coming to the area, you know, that kind of stuff, just anything that I can do to help with Sioux City, because I know, you know, like, my particular property were extended stay, so, you know, the events and stuff don't really affect me so much. But I know other hotels in the area, it really affects them. If there's nothing going on, there's no heads and bets, nobody's making money. So I'd like to help the city somehow get more people to use our great facilities like the Tyson, the Convention Center, that kind of stuff. And that's kind of what I want to do.
That's fantastic. Now, is this, we have people like representing certain segments of the industry, so you would be part of the hotel industry then?
Correct.
Okay.
There are three of those slots.
Yeah. There's three for the hospitality and restaurant industry.
Okay. Good.
Excellent.
Questions?
Nope.
Thank you very much.
Good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tim Seaman, back from a long Irish vacation. Lots of tourism ideas on that trip, did you, Mr. Seaman?
Green.
How you catch that blarney stone? That's what I want to.
My back's got a kink in it. My back has a kink in it. Tim Seaman, 4910 Sixth Avenue here in Sioux City. And I've previously served, as you, I think, all know, on the past EFAB Board and was encouraged by some members of council and some members of that committee to apply for this new venture in EFAB, and so I thought about it, decided that I would. I think the changes from the old EFAB to what's being developed now have some new intricacies to it that I think are exciting, and so I'd look to join that group if it's possible to maybe bring some information from the past into what this new group's looking to do in the tourism and CVB side of things. Any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
I'm delighted you reapplied.
Yeah.
Well, thank you, Dan.
Tim was an asset to the EFAB Board, so I'm sure he'd be a great asset to this one.
One thing, if my numbers are correct, and I want Mark to hear this too, but I think we've had six applicants and there are nine on the board, and so you make seven, eight. And I think we want to wait, at least I would like to wait, until we have at least nine applicants before we decide on the makeup of the board. But I don't know if there's a deadline that we've established for making these applications.
I haven't heard that. Well, and also, it wouldn't just be the first nine, it would make sure that we check all those boxes as well, because there are four at large for citizens, which Mr. Seaman would be filling.
I know there is a grant application coming up that the CVB or what was previously EFAB has to submit, and I think the city managers agreed to take care of that in the interim. But that would be, in my mind, the only reason to expedite the process is that.
I think we're going at a pretty good clip, because we just changed the ordinance, what, a month ago?
Yeah.
Four weeks ago? Three weeks ago?
We do have a bit of a, we want to get applicants in so we can get the board reforming and get moving again, though.
Okay.
Yeah, I share that sense of urgency. I hope we can get going, but I think we are doing well. We just need to make sure that we have different representatives.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Heidi, does this complete all of the applications that we've received?
It does.
So there are no?
So right now, we have six applications altogether, and we've done all six interviews now.
Okay. Thank you.
Tim and Mark are part of the six?
Yes.
Well, we do have a little ways to go.
Historic Preservation Committee, Anna Vest Weber. Come on up and tell us why you would like to serve on that committee.
Hi, yes, Anna Vest Weber. I'm an architect here in Sioux City. I moved here in 2010 after I graduated and worked for almost seven years before deciding to go home to be with my son when he was born a year ago. And I've been looking for opportunities to serve using my training and experience, and this just looks like a good way to help the community, so.
Thanks for making an application.
Yeah.
Yes, we appreciate that very much. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, we'll let you know. Appreciate it. Go to the Consent Agenda, which today's item's three through 16C. You can consider the items to a pass unanimously unless a separate roll call vote is asked for by a council member. You want to speak on any item, please come up as I read it. If you want to speak on an item not on the agenda, please come up under Citizen Concerns. Again, please state your name and address for the record. I'll move the Consent Agenda.
Second.
Three is a reading of the City Council minutes of June 18, 2018. Four is a resolution setting fees for parks and recreation services. Five is a resolution setting fees at Cone Park. I briefly read that, well, more than briefly, but you do have a low-income provision in this, because that's, has to be one of the best-kept secrets in all of Susseland.
Matt Salvatore, Parks and Recreation Director. Just exact same process that we have for the swimming pools we do at Cone Park.
Did very many people use it?
No, they did not this last year.
Because I almost would guarantee you, nobody knows that it's?
We'll do a better job of getting the word out on that.
You know, I have a real difficult time, I'm sure this will pass, but I have a real difficult time. Our first year, we have a little bit of success, and now we want to raise the fees already, which only in government can we do that. So I'm not going to vote for this today. I don't have a problem lowering your three hours, because I think I agree with that, that from what I've learned from people that went there, the four hours, they don't hang around anyway, so, and as long as you don't do a staggered start, it's difficult. So the three hour, I don't really have a problem with, but I do have a real problem that we're raising our fees right away, so, but I'm probably alone on that.
I read, well, I don't disagree with you, Mayor, but I read Matt's report as trying to make the fees consistent with?
Right, but we're still raising all, we're, Monday through Thursday, you've got to be delighted that people are going out there, in my opinion. I bet they're some of your slowest nights, I'm guessing. And so to raise that a dollar doesn't make any sense to me, because until you're running at capacity, are you going to, are you going to raise that and lose people, is my concern? You're just building a market, and I, that's the one I have a real particular problem with. The ones on the weekend where you're only raising one, basically, because you're going to take one of those sessions from eight to 10, I don't have a huge problem with that. But I have, and I don't have a problem with going to the three-hour shifts. I think that's probably makes a lot of sense, but, but the Monday through Thursday, when you're not even close to capacity, that's a problem for me. Do you have any kind of group rates? I saw you had schools down there. I think that's a real potential if you exploit that.
Yeah, we do, for our non-operating hour, we have school rates, but we're, that's one of the things we're really going to work on, is recruiting groups in schools to participate Monday through Thursday, and maybe possibly try to provide some incentive for people to come with a discount or money back. So we're going to pursue that this year and see if it, see if it works.
So you have group rates for those kinds of things then, right?
Just for rentals, when, when the park was not being used, not the non-exclusive hours, we had rates established for that, which, you know, some people took advantage of it on non, no school days.
I saw buses from Orange City there one day.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. The reason it's on here is that was a recommendation of the Cone Park Committee.
Yeah.
So I'm completely fine with keeping it at seven for Monday through Thursday. I think the $10 on the weekends is the way to go. We have now have created more popular sessions with the two that are later, that I think that point, price point is justified.
I'll move that the Monday through Thursday stay the same at the $7 then.
Second that.
Now, I do have another question. To get to that rate consistency.
Yes.
Because my question also is, I'm, I like the mayor, I'm not a huge fan of raising it right away that first year. I actually have a different school of thought, where I think you charge more when people are excited. It's just like a restaurant industry. You don't have a happy hour the first year.
Monday through Thursday.
There, because everyone's going, and then you lower your price later to get them back. But my question is, if we do raise it, it's almost like, and we've talked about this before, of having like a way to bump up your fee, but almost for a parking lot or for something, you know, something physical? I mean, if it's, if you're seeing it as consistency, and then you, what, you said, no, we're actually going to raise them a dollar per person to raise additional funds to be put towards this capital improvement, I think sometimes that's easier to swallow for the public as well.
Yeah, we?
I'm just talking out loud, and I should have talked to you about it more yesterday when I gave you a call, but.
It's just with the, with the weekends, we had a nine-to-one shift that was utilized not as well as the others, and now we have an 11-to-two and a two-to-five thirty. I think those two will be just as popular as our previous one-to-five shift, so.
Yeah.
I think the $10 will be justifiable for both of those sessions.
So this past year, we only had, how many sessions did you have on the weekends? Three?
Nine-to-one, one-to-five, five-to-nine, and then we had?
Then had the twilight after that?
Yep.
So you'll have two twilights, which probably will generate more income as well.
And we might not do the late-night twilight every single Friday and Saturday night. We'll do it more on a, once a weekend.
I'm in favor of keeping the prices where they are right now as well, and, and I would tell you, I wandered down in February, one morning, when you had Sioux Center Christian School down there, and had an opportunity to talk to a couple of the bus drivers, and they had been going to Sioux Falls previously, but they said a lot of really nice things about what they found at Cone Park, and I'm pretty sure you'll get them back, and I think the mayor's idea of, you know, promoting with, with schools and events, maybe even through churches, I think is a great one, a great marketing tool, so.
We're good on the weekends. I think we need to increase capacity Monday through Thursday.
Okay.
And the rentals are going down, the way, rentals are also going down, the rental for the rooms?
Yes, we're going to try to incentivize the lodge rates for the off-season. Those are going, actually going down.
I thought you were plenty high to begin with, so I think that's a good plan.
Yeah. I think they compared the prices to other places, too, and tried to see comparable, but sometimes it's better to go a little bit lower, because we can get more people that way, so.
Yep.
So your low-income fee is 70% of the regular fee?
I believe it's 80%, 20% off.
Right, it's 80%.
Yep.
Well, I have a guy that always tells me, oh, I don't worry about poor kids, so now I can tell him the poor kids can get a break there if they at least apply, so I appreciate it.
We honestly just need to get the word out, and they'll have already established that low income from the pool season, so it carries over to Cone Park.
Thank you. On the amendment.
Gretkin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Caprin?
Aye.
Six is a resolution amending a position classification manager by adding a contract coordinator position in the Finance Department. I'll move to delete that at the recommendation of the management.
Second.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Caprin?
Aye.
Gretkin?
Aye.
Seven's a resolution awarding approach order to Hutchinson Salt Company for Rock Salt until July 1, 2019.
My question on seven is, have we had any experience with Hutchinson Salt Company? Or do you know anyone that has had experience with them? Good afternoon.
Ed Pickens, Sioux City Street Superintendent. We haven't had any experience. I talked to the street superintendent in Omaha, and he had good luck with them. He didn't buy directly from them. He, his deal is with a trucking company, and the trucking company gets the salt from Hutchinson, so, but he didn't have, he said all good stuff about them.
Okay. Sparrow, same, or do you know of anyone?
I have not heard anything. I know Dave Carney, he's not here, but he had mentioned he had dealt with them in the past, so I think Dave could probably answer the question better.
Okay, because the existing company we've used for a couple of years, haven't we?
For, oh, yeah, quite a few years.
I think you used Hutchinson years ago, back in the 80s. I think we bought from them before. They're out in Nebraska somewhere, aren't they?
Kansas. I believe Kansas.
Yeah, that's what I thought. We've had them before, I'm pretty sure.
Nebraska Salt's out of Gothenburg.
Nebraska Salt and Grain.
It says they're at Baxter Springs, Kansas.
Well, Hutchinson, I think you're talking about the one we've been using.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
We haul them over on the town for my second time. Eight, a resolution authorizing city attorney to proceed under the power of eminent domain to condemn property in connection with the Bridgeport West Improvement Project Phase Five. I'm going to abstain on that item. And just so the council knows, the reason you don't have a deal is he's got some health issues that he's, are a lot more important than this condemnation today, I can tell you that, so. Nine, a resolutions adopting plans and specs for the council chambers audiovisual replacement project. Ten are actions relating to grants.
Bob, I have a question. Let's go back to the Bridgeport thing. You said that he had a health issue. Should we just put it off?
I don't think you probably can, but he has a right to appeal.
Sure, this is just, it's still negotiation phase.
Right.
Anything can be worked out, even after we commence proceedings related to this.
Well, I just, you know, if he's dealing with some health problems, I hate to bring this on him.
Well, I'm just telling you, that's why he's not real anxious to have a deal. I don't know if you know what's going on, but.
Okay.
I wouldn't worry about it either if I were him. I'd worry about what he's going through.
Yeah, okay.
Ten, A is a resolution authorizing parks and rec, to apply for a Gilchrist Foundation project grant to support the Chris Larson Park Riverfront Development Project. B is a resolution authorizing regional sports authority district grant application to IEDA to offset the cost of sporting events. C is a resolution approving an application to the IDOT for Federal Aid Highway Rail Crossing Safety Program for safety improvements at various crossings throughout the city. D is a resolution approving an application to the Iowa Finance Authority statewide emergency solutions grant program to provide street outreach to the homeless population.
I have one thing on that, Joe, I wanted to.
On that?
And this was just something small, but I wanted us to continue thinking about it. I was able to go to the street project meeting recently, and I think one thing that's missing, and it talks a little bit about this grant and how you could utilize that for like the listening sessions and different things, is just really the coordination of efforts. I talked with Kevin Nigard again about that a little bit, and, you know, we have people trying to compile census data, and you have the listening sessions, then you have the street medicine project, and it makes sense to me, I mean, rather than, I don't know, the way I was talking to Kevin about it is, sometimes it's frustrating when one person is going out and doing all this, and then other people are like, oh, well, you do this, and then have them do this, and then you should do this. It's like, if we can coordinate efforts so that people wearing different hats can go around to collect all that data, I think that it will be much more accurate and meaningful. I just, I would say if we are successful, and I mean, I hope that we can get this and continue those efforts, but I would just urge if we can continue that coordination, I would really appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Thanks, Jill.
Jill, before you sit down, Mayor, can I go back to 10C? I'm trying to understand the concept of medians and how that provides safety at railroad crossings.
It does.
Can you explain to me?
Jill Wanishite, Neighborhood Services Manager. Basically, it would deter people from going around the gatearms when they're down. The reason why I am proposing to apply for several crossings is if we're ever interested in designating any additional quiet zones, medians are required component of getting those designated, and so several of these came up on the list as being eligible to apply for medians, and so I went ahead and moved forward with those. Several you'll see are on the BNSF line right to the west of Highway 75, and I do get a fair amount of complaints from people living in the Greenville and Kelly Park areas of train horn noise, and so that's why I proposed that. And then also, Hamilton, putting the median back that we ended up taking out as we did that Crossing Surface Project a few years ago, and then Virginia Street, since it is downtown, and we're looking at a quiet zone there, too, so.
And how far out, or how long do those medians have to be?
The maximum the DOT will contribute is 30 feet, and so in some cases with quiet zones, you do have to go a little bit further out, but this was an effort to get at least a portion of it paid for as a part of the grant.
Are the medians placed that close, though, to the crossing?
They're usually about a foot off that, the nearest rail to the driving lane, I guess, if that makes sense, so about a foot off on each side.
So you did a quiet zone project on Hamilton, took the?
Because we got a lot of complaints with the rough crossing there a few years ago, and so when BNSF came in, they raised it higher than we thought they would, and so then they had to taper out the roadway, and so with that part of the median, there's asphalt over it now, and so that's why we would like to see that put back for future if we decide to do.
Is it a quiet zone there?
No, not, not today.
I like it without that median, but.
And these are just applications at this point. If we were to get funded, then those agreements would come before you and you, again, and you'd have ultimate.
Once you get the funding, Jill, you're going to build the medians, let's not.
I'll bring them forward for review.
I understand that, but the rest of these guys are going to vote for those medians all over town. Well, the purpose of the medians is to prevent people from driving around. Jill will drive around. You've got a median right down there in a quiet zone by the Tyson Event Center, and people drive right through that and go right behind the building all the time. I like the idea, Jill.
Thanks.
It doesn't, all you do is pay, make it harder for the snowplow pusher guys, and you serve no safety purpose whatsoever, but let's go ahead and get her done.
And if I read your applications correctly, the railroad doesn't, they don't participate in any of that?
Nope, they do not want to.
They see it as a safety concern as well?
Um, they do. They, I don't know what, the mayor probably has better thoughts or ways to say it than me, but sometimes it's difficult to get them to contribute to projects. I don't know how else to, those are the ways I could say it, I suppose, but we'll leave it at that.
Thanks, Jill.
Thanks.
Thank you. Eleven are actions relating to street closures. A is a resolution temporarily closing various streets in the downtown area, July 6, 2018, 18th for the Big Parade. B is a resolution temporarily, temporarily closing a section of Lewis Park, Larson Park Road on July 6, 2016, for the Big Parade fireworks display. Twelve are actions relating to agreements and contracts. A is a resolution approving a change order number three to the Contract of Executive Companies for the Channel Improvement South St. Avon Street to Lincoln Way Project. B is a resolution proving a consulting services agreement with Beemster and Kim to design the Perry Creek Culvert Project. C is a resolution approving a contract and the performance bond for Subserco for the Big Sioux River Trail Phase One Project. I need to abstain on that. D is a resolution approving a contract for transportation services with South Sioux City. E is a resolution awarding a service provider agreement with Mongon Painting for the 2018, 19, and 2020 Fire Hydrant Painting Project. Thirteen are actions authorizing issuances of checks. A is a resolution approving change order number three and authorizing final payment to Mark Albinicious for Seventh Street and Nebraska Street Hydrant Repair Project. B is a resolution authorizing final payment to RP Constructors for the Clark Early Childhood Center Trail Edition. C is a resolution approving a final payment to KMP Construction for the 2017 Spalding Farm Park Improvements. If we ever doubt, again, that basketball courts and those type of amenities that don't cost very much, don't have value, you ought to drive out there every stinking day. Now, the people in Leeds, I understand that, from talking to Kevin, that Sunny Brook Church wants to put that, one of those in Riverside, why don't, or in Leeds, why don't we have that done? We don't have to wait for our money to do stuff. If somebody's willing to do something early, we should do that.
Matt Salvatore, Parks and Recreation Director, they were willing to donate that, and so we're just really working with them on their schedule, so I'm just waiting to hear back from them on when they want to do it, but we're ready for them whenever they're ready.
Okay, well, let's try to see if there's, if they want to, and I think they do, that we could get that going yet this year, because I'm absolutely amazed at the participation and usage of that park all of a sudden, so. D is a resolution approving payment of workman's compensation settlement to Gina Gates. Fourteen's applications for cigarettes, motion to amend to add Sam's Mini Mart 711 Gordon Drive on renewal, and I'll move that.
Second. Second.
And we'll need a motion to waive the rules as well, to add it.
Do we do that first or second?
I think you can do a combined.
Okay, my motion will be to waive the rules as well.
Please, my second.
Second.
Caprin?
Aye.
Gretkin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Bear liquor license, see the list, come forward if you have questions. Sixteen, receipt of minutes, see the list, come forward if you have questions. Anyone to be heard on any of those?
Mayor, I need to abstain on fourteen A six and fifteen A one B.
Who are you waiting for? Passes five zero seventeen, the hearing ordinance vacating part of Ruston Street, twenty-nine, ten, thirteenth street. Petitioner Shelley Bomber, P&amp;Z recommends approval. I'll move it.
Second.
This was a vacation of an area, dirt roads and, on Ruston Street. We had, the petitioner did not come, but the abutting neighbor came, and the abutting neighbor was concerned about the, there, there are cars and there's dumping going on in the area, which is not part of our jurisdiction. They did indicate they did not use the area proposed to be vacated for transportation purposes. It was clear that was not part of the transportation system. The person who was complaining about dumping did ask that the boundary of the area to be vacated would be, six feet would be added to it, so it would be the same as the, his property line to the west, so there, there would not be a little divot. It would be a straight line. And we all voted in favor of this after quite a lot of discussion.
Anyone to be heard?
Thanks, Susan.
Passes five zero, anybody opposed waiving the statutory rule?
Nope.
I'll move it.
Second.
Gretkin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Caprin?
Aye.
Fifteen, the hearing ordinance adopting a site plan for... I'm sorry, we gotta do second, third, I'll move it.
Second.
Trying to get you to the deal. Passes five zero eighteen, the hearing ordinance adopting a site plan for thirteen, fourteen, third street. Petitioner thirteen, fourteen, West Third LLC, P&amp;Z recommends approval with conditions. I'll move it.
Okay.
Typically, site plans don't come to you. In this particular case, there was a rezoning last fall, and you have the site plan come to you. The site plan, they had pretty much complied with all of the ordinances. There were a couple of items that got cleaned up by the time it came to us, but it was approved unanimously.
Thank you.
I need to abstain on this item, conflict of interest.
And so we're approving with the stipulations that they're gonna meet those two recommendations, right, of the tree islands and the landscaping around the...
My recollection is that those were parts of the requirements of the zoning ordinance and the design standards, and they were, they're complying with those. So they weren't really conditions, they, they're, they had, the, when they presented it in our packet, they weren't not yet complying with those design standards. By the time of the hearing, they were complying in all respects with the design standards. Is that correct?
I think I'm understanding what you're saying, yeah.
There were, there were no deviations or variances.
Chris Madge, Senior Planner, correct. There is two items yet to be corrected in the site plan regarding landscaping. We did receive a new site plan today. I haven't had time to look at that, but I do believe those items have been shown.
As, and as that is what they told us.
And we're passing with those stipulations.
Correct.
Correct, yes.
All right, great.
And I'm Susan Stewart, Chair of Planning and Zoning Commission. I always forget to say that. I'm always in such a rush to get up here, I forget my name.
Passes four zero, Mr. Moore.
Nope.
I'll move that.
Second.
Moore?
I'm staying.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Caprin?
Aye.
Gretkin?
Aye.
I'll move second, third. Passes four zero one, Mr. Moore, abstains. Hearing nineteen, the hearing ordinance vacating twelfth street between Stevan and Hooven Drive. Petitioners Bacon Creek Design, P&amp;Z recommends approval. I'll move first reading.
Second.
In this particular case, the petitioner Bacon Creek Design was representing standard ready mix. They own property on both sides of the area proposed to be vacated. No one spoke in opposition to the item, and it passed unanimously.
Passes five zero, anybody opposed waiving the statutory rule?
No.
I'll move it.
Second.
Waters?
Aye.
Caprin?
Aye.
Gretkin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye. I'll move second and third.
Hold on one second. I picked, hold up, so let me re-vote on that in just a moment. Okay, thank you, vote one more time.
Passes five zeros twenties, hearing ordinance rezoning forty-seven hundred and seventeenth West Street. Petitioner Michelle McCrery, McCrery, P&amp;Z recommends approval. I'll move first reading.
Second.
This was a rezoning from AG to RR for the sole intention of making, turning the area into a couple of developable parcels that could be resold and used for, for lots for housing, and there was no opposition to this item. And it was passed unanimously by the, by the P&amp;Z.
Thank you.
My only question, and this is just because of my ignorance, talk to me about the difference between RR and suburban residential.
I will let someone who's more knowledgeable than me talk to you about that difference.
I think I understand where it's going, but why would we, if it was the comprehensive plan, we were hoping to go that direction? If it was thought that we should do the suburban residential, that we decided to go RR, or we're okay with that just because it would be bigger lots and more environmental friendly? I don't know.
Aaron Berzina, Planner. Basically, the difference, the reason that we're rezoning from agricultural to rural residential is because the lot is only gonna be split one time.
Yeah.
The reason we did not go to suburban residential is purely based on density. Everything in the area is either RR or AG. They're very, very large lots, so it's just more in keeping with the character of the neighborhood.
That makes sense. Thank you.
Mayor, I'm missing your vote.
Passes five zero, anybody opposed waiving statutory rule?
No.
Move it.
Caprin?
Aye.
Gretkin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
I'll move second, third. Passes five zero twenty-one, the hearing resolution proving plans and specs for the Rose Hill Park Improvement and Expansion Project. There are no walls on this.
Within, as far as the...
Second.
Making sure the grade of the different cuts and stuff for the accessibility.
Yes. Yep, I think that was for our, Jill Wonderside Neighborhood Services Manager, that was for the sidewalk corners project.
Yeah.
This for the park expansion, yes, we're actually improving that quite a bit. Right now, if you see where the entrances, we're shifting that to make those grades No walls.
Anybody, I'll move it if nobody else.
We have a first and a second.
Passes five zero, citizen concerns. Anyone like to be heard from the audience, please come forward this time. State your name and address for the record. Seeing none, we'll go to council concerns. Mr. Gretkin.
Uh, I noticed this morning, we received a couple of emails from citizens expressing concerns. One about the loud music from the concert the other night. Is that being addressed, or is it?
We will, well...
Did we get any other?
As far as I know, we've got that one, the email complaint. I'm not aware of any phone complaints today.
But you will visit, thank you. And the other one had to do with fireworks. I know there's a lot of it in my neighborhood, but I didn't know if, I think it's prior to the schedule the police department had set up, but, but just a reminder that fireworks, I'm not sure how you control it, but it's not yet time legally in the city to discharge themselves.
July third.
July third, yes. If they get a little anxious, just need to control their anxiety there and not shoot them off for another week or so. And anything that they can do to cooperate would be greatly appreciated, so, that's all. Not that it'll do any good.
Well, you know, Bob, congratulations on the win.
Big win.
The bandits are going to town here, you guys. So, explain what has to happen before we can get back here.
The Southern Division has a playoff game tonight. If the Texas team beats Albuquerque, the playoff will be here next Saturday. If Albuquerque wins, we'll be getting on a bus Thursday and driving to Albuquerque to play Saturday for the championship.
And what are, who's favored, do you know?
Well, Albuquerque's the number one seed, but Texas has beaten everybody so far lately, so.
So if they win, then we play next weekend?
We'll play next weekend, here in Sioux City.
All right.
June thirtieth.
I'm taking off.
That's the hope, to go to Albuquerque or here?
No. Right, well, hey.
Ride the bus!
If I'm not gonna work, I, I'll ride the bus. Anyway, that's all I got. Congratulations.
Yeah.
Yes.
Definitely, um, the usual list of different events and stuff. Make sure to check out Downtown Live if you haven't done so yet. Uh, that's Thursday evenings, Food Truck Friday is always a great time on Fridays. And then the only one, other event that I wanted to mention was on Saturday from ten AM to four PM is the Fur Festival and Carnival. It's a fundraiser for the Sioux City Animal Adoption and Rescue Center. So I, they have a ton of silent auction items and...
Where's this at?
Great pets for adoption. That animal rescue.
It's at their facility.
It is at their, it's at their facility. And that's ten to four on Saturday, so. Go down and support them, it's a great cause, bring home a pet. That's all I got there.
I'm not legal if I do that, that's not good.
Just a, just a couple of things. I want to thank the city and city staff and Simcoe and all of those that are reaching out to the people that are having problems with flooding. It's just incredible, the flooding that's going on right now in the, in the region, so I appreciate the city and, and Simcoe reaching out for anything they can do to help. I've already covered, I think, and I didn't really get an answer if we have an application deadline for the events.
No, open till full, and then we'll, we'll still take applications after that, but we'll announce that the, that the committee's full in full terms.
How do we advertise that?
Online.
Just online?
Online, we've also placed an ad in the Sioux City...
One some, oh, okay.
Showing all the vacancies.
Okay, great.
And I'm wanting to reach out to a couple of people in those different industries too.
Yeah, and I've, what was the breakdown again? I know I can go to the code, but...
Is it nine members now?
Nine.
Three hospitality.
Correct.
Three at large.
Four at large.
Four at large. One council member.
One downtown partner slash chamber.
One downtown partners or chamber.
Okay, so...
You can be on that board.
Do we have any idea where we stand right now?
We need hospitality and restaurant industry people.
Correct. And chamber slash downtown partners is applying.
Yes.
About two more minutes.
I can think of one too, that I'll put a bug in his ear and maybe we can...
Yep.
The last item, Matt, we, I haven't had a chance to call him, tell you, I was gonna ask you this, but how, just how are things going with the swimming pools so far?
And splash pads.
Well, the splash pads are probably going great.
Well, they were going at a record clip.
Until?
Till the last week where we've had all this rain, we've had a lot of cancellations of swimming lessons in the last week, so it slowed down, but we started out great, so hopefully the weather clears off.
Personnel that you need.
What's that?
You have all the personnel that you need?
Yes, we did great with lifecards this year.
Okay.
Yep, and the splash pads are being very well attended as well.
And what night is free?
Friday night. Rotates between the three pools.
Okay.
Yep.
And you're advertising that as well?
Yep, we have had lots of participation in those this year.
Okay.
I also want to add to the free Fridays. The reason that we have free Fridays, I mean, is because of Fran Parmeshine. He goes out and, and he gets sponsors every, for every Friday night.
Unmercifully, he goes after them.
Yeah. We have a new, we have a new...
He won't leave you alone?
We have a new president, Cindy Brewer, who's actually taken that, she took that on this year, so Fran helped her, and it's been a joint effort.
Fran, I must still be on Fran's list.
Yeah.
Well, if anybody wants to be sponsored, I think it's two hundred and fifty bucks, isn't it?
Yeah.
Coming Friday is which pool?
I can't remember, I can let you know.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Keep up the good work. That's all I have, Mayor.
Last Wednesday, my friend Alex drove me to La Mars, and we went to the Northwest Iowa League of Cities meeting, and Mike Wells and his wife spoke on partnerships, and we had a very nice catered meal. And I would encourage you that if you are interested at all in the Iowa League meetings, at least for a day even, they're being held in council booths this year, so it's not a trek, trek across the state, so it would be the time to go if you're gonna go.
When is that again?
I think it's August fourteenth, I think, or sixteenth, something like that.
I don't know.
It's Tuesday through Thursday, I believe.
But whenever.
Oh, really?
Um, how's the boring going across down? They get that whole board?
I, I will have to get back to you. Do you know something I don't?
No, I just, I still see their equipment there, and I would, thought by now they'd be done, so I was just...
I will find out.
Okay, I just was curious. No, I'm not trying to start any trouble today, Bob. No, so, do you have anything to the good of the...
You're not, no.
Ladies, I move adjourned.
Second.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.